Thanks, thanks everyone for attending. At this point, I'd ask for, is there any addition, agenda additions or deletions? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion with regard to the June thirteenth minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion, anybody find anything?
Looked good to me.
Alright, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And you want to pose? We're gonna temporarily hold off on highway until...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go out of order this evening and go down to select board warrants and we can return to highway when the road commissioner arrives.
Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to pose? Alright, I'd ask for a, well... We don't have the warrants, we don't have anything here.
Okay, then I approve them.
My understanding is they will be tomorrow and Bob will sign and we'll have the full stack for our next meeting, I think is my understanding.
Oh, okay.
And I know that, yeah.
Probably later in the day, but I'll do it, yeah.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
They're about an hour and a half away from home last I checked, so...
Could you drive a little faster?
Yeah.
I've been known...
We won't be here, yeah. I don't plan on being here.
Okay. Gloria, do you want to be a guest or do you want to be, okay. Public comments, do you have any public comments? Oh, here comes Cash. Road Commissioner, do you have anything you want to report?
He's speechless.
We have a price for the sand for this year that needs to be signed off on if agreed on for winter sand to pike.
I was gonna say, is that the pike quote?
Right there.
So...
But normally we get just over three thousand ton. And we have some reserve more than normal left over. So I backed that up to twenty-five hundred ton with high fuel prices and stuff. Hopefully they'll come down for next year.
Don't hold your breath.
I'm not holding my breath, but...
Well, with that being said, I'll make a motion that the board chairman signs off on behalf of the select board.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And you want to pose? Alright.
Yeah, I didn't know if you want to have a discussion about the grader replacement. If we gotta start working on that. We talked about replacing that within two years. And what I've learned, it takes a year to a year and a half to even, if you order one today, you will see it for about a year and a half.
So what, I mean, obviously the starting point is to get bids, I mean, or get prices from...
Right.
Couple different, three different places ideally?
John Deere and probably Caterpillar.
What's this one, a Galleon?
Galleon.
Are they even in business anymore?
They are. We can price them out. I have checked around and actually two individuals that are, one of them is a huge outfit. And the other individual's a pretty good sized contractor and they recommended if we could swing the one brand deer of them. We'll price them out and see where we're at.
Like John Deere you mean, or Caterpillar?
Cat.
Cat? What's the, what would be the closest, Milton Cat or where?
Milton.
Milton?
And Nortrak from Springfield would be the John Deere. They're actually not too much different.
I was gonna say, probably about the same each direction, yeah. I mean, we know it was kind of on the slate to do. I would say if you're a year, the big thing I guess would be bid, you know, prices bids basically and finding out, yeah, if it's two years out, when you have to actually put money on the table. Cause that obviously plays into it too. Cause if they're gonna say you gotta put...
No money, either no money down or, or money down.
If they're gonna, yeah, if they're gonna require money down to order it.
I believe, and I didn't, and I kinda read between the lines, basically, um, it can be ordered with no money down because once it gets here, we don't accept it or we don't accept it.
Go sell it to somebody else.
We'll sell it.
What's the chances the next couple of weeks before our next meeting that you get some prices? And then let's come back to the board. I mean, we're just throwing money, good money after that.
Just, uh...
That's a twenty-year-old machine.
This last winter, we dumped twenty-four thousand into that machine. Two different times and it totaled up to twenty-four thousand. It's gone back because of a bearing in the rear end right now and I had no idea what that bill's gonna be, probably three, four thousand.
So...
The other thing is, oh, I know I interrupted. The other thing is, it needs tires, eight, nine thousand dollars worth of tires. With that being said, the rims aren't, there's, most of the rims are okay, but there's probably three, four rims that need to be replaced. Depends on how they compare.
Will they go, the year and a half before we, if we, you know, trade, will they go that long or you?
We got one tire that won't even take care. And I think she's hard because it's old and hard. Flat out. And I talked to Reggie last fall about that, when he had it apart, they had it apart up here at the windmill. What do you think of the condition of tires? He goes, they're shot, they're worn out, so...
They're probably original.
Have we looked into contracting out, road, road grading?
That too.
I'm just curious what it would cost us to have it done twice a year?
I was pushing numbers around on that and this grader's got ten thousand hours on it. And we've had it for twenty years. And that's five thousand hours a year, is that right? No?
No, no. It's got ten thousand on it?
Ten thousand.
Oh, I had those figures.
That's not right. It'd be five hundred.
I was gonna say, five hundred hours a year?
Five hundred hours a year. The problem is, a lot of times when we're doing projects and stuff, we, it's good to have that grader ready available like we are in Schoolhouse. Go up, once you do that, do that section.
Then it's done.
Then it's done. It's different, you know, different ways to look at it, but I can do that.
Though for me personally, I'd sooner have the town have that piece of machinery. For reasons you stated, but if other small towns wanna rent it from us or rent an employee, the, you know, the smaller towns, sometimes they do that too. I mean, we did that with Timmott?
Didn't we rent?
Wallingford did some work for us last year. Steve, Steve promoted grader for us. And I think that, I have to ask Heidi, I think that bill's like five thousand.
Cause what was the, we were spitballing rough numbers, what was the rough number that they were throwing at us for a new machine?
Two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred thousand.
Around three hundred?
But there's grant money that, I mean, don't we have some, what was it, the ARPA money or something?
The grader would be eligible for ARPA, but I'd have to double check.
I mean, it would be, but I mean, you guys are talking about a garage too and there ain't even enough money for the garage. I mean, if you buy the grader, then the garage project is in the crapper.
They also have, Heidi and I had it planned out on a two-year turnaround with the equipment replacement fund.
Wasn't so, wasn't it, um, was it supposed to be July of twenty-three or July of twenty-four? July of twenty-four?
I believe it was twenty-four.
Was the first half? Cause we were splitting it, weren't we doing two payments over two fiscal years? When we talked about it, planned it?
What's that, a hundred thousand in equipment fund going in every year? So it's gonna be three year.
So we should have it actually at that point?
By twenty-four.
In twenty-four, we should have it.
I believe that's... Heidi and I crunched numbers last fall there.
Yeah. I mean...
The thing about, for me, renting, if we got twenty years out of this piece of equipment, isn't if we wanted to rent something for twenty years over course of time?
Those figures are true cost, I mean, so... But the thing is, the problem of renting is, like I said, availability of, build habit and... I mean, there's times like, there's, we got one road, two roads that are really high maintenance, that's Windy Lane, which is just a short run, and then South Creek Road. I mean, they're better because of the material we're using on them and whatnot, but...
I would say just start pricing some stuff out and we'll have to have a conversation. I think it would be good to get priced just to see, I'd be curious to know. I'm, I mean, if you did subcontract it and the whole town got graded three times in the summer, you know, spring, middle and in the fall to put them to bed. I'd be curious to see what the quote even is.
And how do you, how do you figure that was over time, you know, in ten years, it's gonna cost more?
Oh, sure, yeah, I mean that...
Or have to have a, some kind of a fudge number in there to...
Yeah, I mean, obviously it makes it so that that would fall under the contract services part of the budget.
Right, right.
So it would have to go in the next cycle, if we were gonna go that way, it would have to go there.
Right, oh yeah.
But doing, even doing it this way, you still, every year, you still got money that you're putting into it because you got a maintenance and...
Oh, sure, no, there's always, there's always maintenance.
And that's gonna go up every year, so...
But it's nowhere near, two things, for me anyway. The availability of having that piece of equipment and the fact that we got twenty years out of this one. Even though the last couple of years, we've had some mechanical issues.
We're paying the price on them.
Right, but it hasn't, we, we got our money's worth for say seventeen, eighteen years with that thing.
There was also some things that were discovered too that going for, there were some maintenance things that we had to kind of catch up on last year too, correct? Is that, is that the piece of equipment that I'm thinking of that something hadn't been changed probably ever?
Yeah, and it's, and...
It all added up kind of at once?
Just, and even Reggie said that, that it shouldn't have happened like it did because he's calling them nine, between nine and ten thousand hours. He's bringing them graders in to do, or five thousand hours, to do brake jobs on them. And that was the major expense last year. And that would have been even okay still if a spring hadn't broke, which you don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna try this for the next couple of weeks and we'll have this discussion when you have some hard numbers. And work with Katie, I guess.
Then we can have this discussion based on a little bit more fact than...
Yep.
Just an update about the Alphresia Bridge that had the incident a while back. They're replacing with panels alongside to bring it up to state standards. And as of late this afternoon, they were putting signs up for...
I see they were.
So they're probably moving forward and they were gonna do it right after the first, Fourth of July sometime. So that must, might be happening, so... I'm thinking that they'll have it down to one lane.
While they're doing it, yeah.
While they're working on it, I would think. I don't know exactly what the sign said, I haven't been down there.
So they're putting guardrail panels on it basically?
Yeah, to bring it up to state, they, I guess they can't just fix the cable.
Are you guys all done with Constantino's excavator?
That's going to Tier Road for that project. I talked Greg about it today again, just giving an update, a timeframe.
So, we, what, we rent that for a month?
We're renting it by the week.
Oh, okay.
And when it's, when it's being used, that's when it gets charged out.
So is it based on the hour meter basically?
No, no hour, just, we, we use that six days. And we'll get charged for six days.
So if it's sitting, it's not getting charged?
No. You treat it as okay, very, very good.
How's, uh, how do you get that around? Does he have, you have to...
We'll hire somebody like Fabians, Casella or Marikowski or somebody to move it, or Joe Castle or somebody.
How about that, drive it over, Tier Road's not that far.
Oh, yes, sir. What about the blacktop? Oh wait, man, maybe chew that up, it needs to be done anyways.
How about the Creek Road Structure Engineer?
You have much on that?
You guys will look at, um, you have a structure grant that is for that box covert. I believe it's for a hundred and eighty thousand. And this is just kind of to start off with engineering of it. I don't really have much information beyond that.
That's what this is, right Katie?
Yeah.
So does this engineer come to us from the state then basically?
No, it's private.
It's one we had to get?
Um, actually, um, the company that we're dealing with has a group engineering firm that they work with. And for the best interest, I felt is better off to, along, they're already working together, a lot of projects. To stick with them. That was my thought, unless somebody has something different.
Basically unless they run into extras like they talk about in here, it's a ten thousand dollar.
Ten thousand to do the scope and see.
The scope and...
Oh, there's still a lot of stuff to that, I wouldn't have realized how much was involved in it.
It's gonna be quite, quite a while with that road closed, so... When they, I suppose, go to work.
Probably two weeks.
You're looking at next year anyway, you're not looking at this year, are you?
They'll push for this fall.
They are gonna push for this fall?
Wow.
Yeah, I believe this grant runs out, uh, end of next year. I wanna see this to some...
We can do it next spring, we have to.
Definitely, yeah.
And the other thing is with, what Katie and I have learned is, with these grants we're getting from the state, they don't want you sitting on that paper. They want you to use it, move on. And with that, it's kind of a good faith thing that they know you're using the stuff for projects and doing the projects and using it for what it's for and then it might be a little bit of help to get more grants in the future.
I'm making a motion that the chairman signs the grant proposal, or the engineering proposal on behalf of the board.
Yeah, East Engineering?
Yeah, East Engineering.
Do you second that, Ed?
I'll second that.
Further discussion, anybody have any comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And you want to pose?
Just for public record, uh, just to let you know about the mowing of roadsides. We've waited for parts again for the John Deere mower. Doing the roadsides and hopefully the part be in tomorrow.
Uh, let's see. Katie, what's this? The State of Vermont Standard Grant Agreement, that's...
That's, um, either for better roads or for the paving, whatever it says on the top.
Let's deal with it then. Better Roads Grant Agreement.
So is the Better Roads the one we have to sign every year in order to get our grants, is that?
No, this is for beginning work on Tier Road for this year.
Oh, that's the backside for the MRGP?
We've, yeah, we've, we've already been approved.
Yeah, we're combining grants and aid in better roads for the Tier Road project and this is just the agreement.
But this is the IRA side, right?
Yes. There's two, three sections there.
That have to be addressed under the, that was our high...
High priority.
Priority or whatever?
Those are ones, that's one-on-ones, I believe, if I look in the records, it has to be done by two thousand twenty-five.
Okay. We're ahead of schedule?
One almost, third, twelve thousand?
I think that, what was the grant's name?
And then the second one was twenty?
Yeah, this one's nineteen eight.
Nineteen eight.
So I'll make a motion, actually, we authorize the chairman to sign both the Better Back, Better Roads and the Class Two roadway grant. So both grants for the Tier Road project.
It shouldn't be Class Two everywhere, it should be Class Three.
Or is that paving? Sorry, I'll retract that motion, just make the motion right now for the Better Roads grant.
Do you second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And you want to pose? Uh, okay.
Now I'll make a, now I'll make a motion that we sign the grant agreement for the paving, which is of South Creek Road, correct?
That's the grant, yes.
The grant for South Creek Road paving?
Do you second that motion for discussion?
I'll second. And you're gonna pave what has been paved in the past, Cash?
Yes, just that stretch to, uh, actually just before Tammy Ryan's, is it Tammy Ryan?
Up to the ledge?
Freeman, right?
I still can't believe they approved that one and didn't approve the other one.
Right. Um, talking with one of the contractors this morning, they said that only three towns in our area got it. Bringing that together with the expense and everything, he, he was just throwing it out there, one of the paving companies this morning, is like, the other towns that did get it are, one of them's gonna do, I guess, part of their project this fall or the summer. But the rest, I guess the other town, the way I understood it, and the other part of that town that did, was gonna work on part of theirs this year, they're gonna hold off to spring, um, taking gamble on fuel prices and tar being cheaper. So my thought is, I'd like to see that South Creek going down. It's not like it's five miles long.
It's not a terribly long stretch.
Not a long stretch. We're spending a lot of time and stuff and potholes and fill-in and stuff and...
They're just gonna shim it and overlay it, or are they gonna grind it?
Just gonna shim it. We're gonna put a one inch shim on it, shim on it, that's it.
That's it, no top coat?
Overlay and no top coat or nothing, it's gonna be a one inch shim.
Well, that's what I think, but it always happened down there, they didn't waste...
I don't know.
I, I can remember, maybe you remember, Bob, they only ground that up once. And that was when Bert Austin...
I'm not even sure, I'm not doing grinding at once.
I don't even think it was ground, I thought that that was fresh pavement over dirt.
I think so, I'm not sure.
There's layers there.
There are layers there?
Yeah, now that was, they ground it, that's when Bert was, because, uh...
I thought Bert was the first one to pave that. From dirt to tar, is what I'm saying.
No, that was, or that section was tarred.
To the ledges.
To the ledges. And then they, well, it was getting all chewed up and stuff.
Yep.
So Ralph said that, um, well, let's, we'll grind, grind that up and then put a new top coat on it or whatever you call it, I don't remember. But that's...
Shim coat.
Yeah. Cause I used to go fishing down there all the time, so that's how I...
What we're seeing on the past road, the roads, especially on the creek, on the Creek Road where it's basically down in the wetlands, the road is, Creek Road. There's no base in it and where has been ground, brought in more material and stuff, she still is not holding her shape. I mean, it did help. So is it really worth it to go through the whole process of grinding a lot of these sections? The other, the other, um, when he was here today, we also looked at Pimple Hill up there, the one-way road above Crer's there on North Shrewsbury Road. There was like seven hundred and twenty feet of that to be, that is real bad shape. The other section was from, on the Creek Road from Alphresia, south to Hawkins where the bridge is gonna be replaced. Most of that is okay, but she's starting to go. And if we can catch it now with a shim or just an overlay, we can...
Let's deal with this...
That'll buy us like six years.
Mr. Chairman, I'll call the motion.
Alright, all in favor of the motion, this is South Creek Road now. Please say aye.
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 And you want to pose? And it's just for me to sign it.
Did you know Wilk is driving along that road, bringing all their stuff?
They are.
I mean, that's what's beating the crap out of that road. Wilk is hauling a lot of stuff from Wallingford up there.
On Creek Road?
Yeah.
They come right by here. It's not just Wilk.
What are they pulling out a pike and sending it that way?
I don't know. Whether they're doing a job down here, I don't know. I've seen the trucks, but we've been on the other side of town pretty much most times, so... I do catch them once in a while.
Yeah, one quick question, Cash, while we're talking about South Creek Road, is that ledge moving any at all now or is it pretty much staying put?
Pretty much, we saw a little bit move this winter, it was frozen.
Well, I, I thought there was a little, one crack opened up there more on that south edge of it.
Yep, and we bought ledge signs, watched Fallen Ledge and those signs have disappeared.
Yeah, yeah, cause they were put up four or five years ago?
No, I just put them up three years ago.
Was it that short a time?
Okay.
You got any chance of getting the lines painted?
I was surprised to see the...
Walker Mountain Road?
I was surprised to see the state was actually doing some the other day.
They paved one thirty-three and they, and they put the lines on the same day.
Right. Right.
Maybe a squeaky wheel, we should squawk a little bit?
Again?
Yeah.
And we do, was Molten Avenue ever done in the past, years past?
Yeah. So Molten Avenue got done...
Alphresia.
Molten Avenue, last time it was done, what, two years ago?
Yeah, it doesn't have any lines on it now?
No, no line.
Alphresia doesn't either, and then Walker Mountain.
I would focus on Walker Mountain first.
Yeah, that's dangerous sometimes.
That's our state aid road, so...
Yeah.
At the, where the cattails are on one thirty-three and Walker Mountain Road?
Yep.
I got a call from the state, what's his name, Jeremy?
Jeremy, the Councilman District.
And they take care of it and, uh, cause a couple of people had called about coming off of one thirty-three onto Walker Mountain Road, they can't see because of the cattails.
But that's state, not ours.
Yeah, so, uh, I got Jeremy's number from the state garage and one of the individuals... One of the individuals, the second one that called me, I gave them that number.
Okay.
And, but he called me back and said that, and so if any of you guys get a call. That they're supposed to be by the end of this week, going down there with the, the bigger. Well, uh, cutter, roadside cutter, that can reach over that fence a little bit.
Oh.
So that's what they're supposed to be doing, that's what he told me.
That is a painting in that corner.
It is.
Actually, I'm hired, went and hauled all the quarry and stuff, he was a dump truck setup, I. Last, yes, this morning I noticed that. It's just, you couldn't see.
Yeah.
He told me that, uh, people cut off one thirty-three onto that road too quick. And that's why it's dangerous. I said, no, it's not, it's because of damn cattails. But that's another whole other story. Um. Anything else, Cash?
I think I'm all set.
What do you have anything else for Cash? Uh, we have two fireworks permits. And, uh, or chair, sign them.
Are they our tipicals?
Yep. Uh, Nicholas Winnie is his name? Yeah. And permit for July third. And he lives, uh, seventeen thirty-five. In T- East Timmets Road.
Yeah, these are both ones we've done before, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and do that and also. This'll be it, cause, and we've, that means we've only issued two permits for this fourth of July. Uh, Nipes.
Yeah, Nipes Drive.
Wasn't Walker, wasn't Walker Mountain this year?
But this.
That would be the one that we received all the complaints about that we probably wouldn't issue again, is my understanding, so.
So. Motion made to sign both, been seconded. I thought it was Bob?
Bob will, I will, don't matter.
One of us will, hey, I'll fuck with it.
Okay, I thought you did. I must be.
No, I don't think so. No, because Robert, I was going to, and then Robert started to say something, I said, well, now wait a minute.
All those in favor? All right, so. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the cemetery mowing. Katie, you wanna give us an update when you have a moment?
Yeah, so, um. Our cemetery contractor that, for this new fiscal year, to increase their price. So I included what they bid originally and then what the price increase is. Um, it's still less than the next bid that we had received.
I was gonna say, it's still lower than our last bid.
Yeah.
I would.
So if you do go with this pricing, I have the contract ready for you to sign if you wanna go with it.
I, I, I mean, everything's out of this world, so I just would make a motion that we go ahead and. Um.
Select Board Chair.
Select Board Chairman signed the new contract with the. Intrinsic. Price changes.
I'll second. Further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I don't wanna mow that.
What are you gonna do? I mean, you can't, you can't do anything about it.
I move, we adjourn. No, we have that gentleman back there that wants to. Have a. Question or two. All right, sir, do you wanna speak to the board? Do you have any comment?
Just here to observe?
Yeah, just here to turn on.
There you go.
So, everybody, this is your Monday night fun?
Oh, boy.
Everybody waits till football season.
We were, we were looking for a transfer.
Say we did good there.
Gloria, as town clerk, you have.
Oh, wow.
You would be in trouble.
I guess. Go ahead.
We have an election coming up, a primary election on August ninth, Tuesday. We're open from ten to seven. And you can request an absentee anytime, just call the office. And it's posted at the town hall, transfer station, post office and on our website. The ballots and anything about information about.
August ninth.
August ninth, Tuesday. And you're all invited.
As always.
Help, yep. New tabulator.
Oh, really?
Oh, okay.
What is this from, China?
Don't ask. Dominion?
Oh, it's a Dominion?
It's a Dominion.
It's approved it. They all, we all tested it, it's, it's similar, which is, it counts. It's different procedures.
Heidi? Heidi?
Katie, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, just, I did receive an email today that we were awarded our, uh, passive safety grant for the standing desks and stuff, so. Probably be working on purchasing that and then getting reimbursed. So we were awarded for the whole thing.
And that's all of you, right?
Yeah.
Pretty much everybody? Cool?
Everybody's gonna be standing up now?
Well, you have, you have the option, right? That's the latest thing.
I look for, I need excuse lately to sit down, wouldn't mind stand up, but.
Did we get it for the select board too?
It has to be for employees.
I'd rather take it standing up, but.
I have no comment. I have a comment, but I'm not coming.
All right.
Um. Cash, you have any concerns?
Just with fourth of July coming up, everybody be safe and. Careful between swimming and fireworks and whatnot. And watch the road, drink and drive it.
About the same thought and that's it.
Well, sir, thank you. I got nothing. So moved.
I'd. Ask for a second on it, so moved. All in favor of, so moved?
All right.
Time opposed?